Mrs. Blankfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mrs. Pardie?
Here.
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Erdel?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Okay, very good. Just for the record, this is December 7, 2020, a meeting of the University of the United City Council, convening at 6:30 per notice so that we may entertain a motion to go into an executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved. I guess I'm muted now.
Yeah, well, let me state for the record why we're going in. I did not do that, so I think that's what Luke was about to jump in on. We need to go into executive session to have an update with our Labor Council regarding negotiations, labor, and related matters to that, all of which are appropriate for executive session due to both an item on the agenda and just for general updating of the council. So, Mr. Iosu is here, so we'll go and mention with basically everyone who is present at this point.
I need a second.
Yes, motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mrs. Pardie. If there's no discussion...
No. Not with me.
Oh, I'm sorry. My goodness. Second by Mrs. Blankfeld.
I can't wait to when I just start.
Yeah, I don't know why I heard Barbara and saw Susan. It's gonna be one of those nights. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Mayor, I'll make you co- I'll make you host now, so you can move everybody into... And then you'll bring everybody back.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you. I tried to assign everybody automatically, and of course, that didn't quite work the way it should, so we'll do it manually. Bear with me just a moment. Very good. See you there. All right, is there a motion to return to regular session?
I'll say move, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Thomas, are you there to call the roll?
I'm here. I forgot to unmute myself. Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss? Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Is there a motion to recess until 7:00 PM to start the regular portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Erdel, second by Mrs. Blankfeld. If there's no discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Hey, we're in recess. Or recess.
Mayor, can you make me host again?
Yes, I can.
I was hoping for like Jim Morrison singing as we like broke on through to the other side. When you, that's how you had us depart from the breakout room to here. You said, "I'll see you on the other side," and I heard the doors in my head.
Resume the... We'll resume the regular meeting and come out of recess, so... Like to call the meeting, University of the United City Council back to order. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel? Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Here.
Very good. Will all those who are able please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to consider this evening. The first is from the last regular meeting of November 16, 2020. The second is the special meeting of November 23, 2020. We should take them separately. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting of November 16, 2020?
I'll move on the last set of minutes.
Is that for the special meeting or the regular meeting?
Regular meeting, November 16.
I have one comment.
Okay, yes, Mr. Rock.
I gotta find it now. I had it, and then it went away. It was regarding the Mr. Iosu's section. Okay, I found it here. It looks like it's on page four. And it's towards the end, second paragraph from the bottom, that starts with, "Mr. Rock commented" that the council had already budgeted $35,000. Mr. Iosu's name is spelled incorrectly in there on that first line.
As long as we're on the subject of name spellings, I did catch where my own name was misspelled at least once. It's Brennan A-N, the Irish way, as opposed to E-N, which is the German way. I have the Irish spelling. So if we could make note of that too, please. Are there any other changes? Is there then a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
So moved. Second.
Okay. No motion. Erdel, second by Mr. Gould. Any discussion? Singing, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Minutes is approved, as amended. Next then would be there be a motion to adopt the minutes of the special meeting of November 23, 2020.
So moved.
Very good. Motion approved by Mr. Erdel. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blankfeld?
Hi.
Mrs. Berry?
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Erdel?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Those minutes are approved. Next is comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Total time allowed 15 minutes per meeting unless otherwise permitted by Council ordinance number 91-25. Is there anyone here this evening who would care to address the city? If so, I'll ask you to raise your hand so that we may recognize you, and when we give you the floor, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes. Here to address the city this evening. All right. There does not seem to be anyone asking to address the city, so we will move on then to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action. At our last regular meeting of November 16, 2020, it was unclear whether we would be permitted to hold this meeting virtually. Since that time, Governor Dewine has signed House Bill 404, authorizing public bodies to hold meetings virtually until July 1, 2021. This comes as a relief to us all who and how we conduct the city's business. The public may be assured that we will continue to do its business and hold our meetings virtually. Governor Dewine announced today that the 10:00 PM curfew will be extended. It took effect November 19 and was due to expire on December 10. COVID-19 cases continuing to surge, efforts that encourage people to stay home and stay in are well taken. Many of us celebrated the Thanksgiving holiday with no one but the immediate family already under our own roof. I am beginning to hear folks who nevertheless held larger gatherings and instances of spread as a result. For privacy, I don't identify any of them here. As the winter holidays approach, planning to stay home and stay in without visitors will again be the prudent course. Amongst all here, these numbers should be commonly known. I nevertheless note these figures for the record. The 21-day reported case average in Ohio as of today is 8,501. Today's new cases are 9,273. Reported deaths statewide have climbed to 7,022, breaking today the 7,000 mark. Total cases in Ohio are 484,297 and will surely break the half-million mark in the next couple of days. Nationally, we're up to 15,321, 63 cases, 290,155 total deaths. Today is December 7, a day that will live in infamy. On this day in 1941, 2,403 Americans were lost in the sneak attack on Pearl Harbor. May they rest in peace. In comparison, the death count due to COVID-19 over the past three days in this country is 4,743, or roughly double that. Here at home in Cuyahoga County, 87% of ICU beds are filled. Local positivity rates have also hit a record high, 24.9%, nearly 10 points higher than state average. While our county has not yet turned purple, the surrounding counties have, and it would seem we are on our way. Please be judicious about your in-person interactions. Stay home when you can and wear your masks. Since our last regular meeting, we gave away Heinan's gift cards by mail instead of handing out free turkeys for Thanksgiving. Thank you to 188OhioComp for their generous donation to our community. We had a special meeting of council on Monday, the 23rd, to address the firewall issue at City Hall and at the 2245 Annex. The approved repairs have been implemented. Thank you. We announced the civic award winners for 2020 on Thanksgiving Day in recognition of the work done in the aftermath of George Floyd's senseless murder in Minneapolis. We recognize those who engaged in the review of our city's use-of-force policies, and I congratulate once again our Citizens of the Year, being all the members of the Citizen Advisory Committee on Policing Policies, our Co-E employees of the Year, Police Chief Dustin Rogers and Police Lieutenant Mark McCarter, for their work on the committee. Together with Public Official of the Year, Councilwoman Sondra Berry, who led and was instrumental in coordinating the group's efforts. In a year that has been the most trying of our lifetimes, these honorees prove themselves to be the best of what 2020 has had to offer. I thank them all for their service. I will provide a complete copy of all those who we recognized, the civic awards, to Mrs. Thomas for the record. Last week, 2020 dealt us the Last week, twenty twenty dealt us the kind of snowstorm that befitted this wretched year, giving us nearly two feet of snow over a forty-eight hour period. Due to warm temperatures, this was the wettest and heaviest of snows to clear away and shovel. I thank our Service Director Jeff Picorni, Assistant Director John Pacella, who was also our coworker of the year, and all of our dedicated employees in the Service Department who met the challenge to clear our streets, working day and night throughout that time, all while keeping to the regular rubbish schedule. For reasons explained to the community last week, after careful review, we did very little sidewalk plowing, primarily because of the ground being so soft and not yet froze. The bombardiers always tear things up when we plow the sidewalks. In our estimation, the muddy mess that would have ensued was not worth it. Much of the snow has already melted and with temperatures projected to rise into the fifties later this week, most, if not all, remaining snow should melt away. When it is colder and the ground has had a chance to freeze properly, you can count on our being out with the bombardiers after future snows. Last Wednesday, I testified before the House Finance Committee on House Bill three oh five, Cup Patterson, a bill to reform public education funding in the state of Ohio. And I incorporate that testimony by reference and will provide a copy to Mrs. Thomas for the record. The morning I testified, our public school teachers were out picketing on what turned out to be a snow day. And on that same day, thankfully, the parties reached a tentative agreement to end that strike and go forward. The Teachers Union membership has approved the contract. The Board of Education meets tomorrow to take a vote on same. I thank Teachers Union President Karen Rigo, Superintendent Elizabeth Kirby, School Board President Jody Serini, and everyone on both negotiating teams and all parties involved for finding common ground to reach an agreement for the benefit of the community, for the students, for the teachers, for all involved. I know how challenging it was, and that is why I took the time to go to Columbus and make the case in person for what must be done to fix school funding in Ohio and in this district especially. The work is far from over. I've spoken with our State Senator Sandra Williams, as well as State Senator Matt Dolan, who chairs the Senate Finance Committee. There's still a lot to work out. After speaking with them both, I know they both understand how important reform is, especially to the CHUH District. The future of University Heights, its fortune, its success, is tied at the hip with our sibling city of Cleveland Heights and with our shared school district. May we all prosper together and dedicate our efforts to ensure that happens. For years, our standard bearers have talked about hope. It can be inspirational. It is not enough to hope. Action must go with the words, deeds must go with talk, and the pursuit must be tireless, no matter how weary we get. And I know we're weary, and I want the public to know that every person working for the city of University Heights is giving it everything they have. I could name names, and if I did, I would be reading the entire employee directory. I have long seen that the people who serve this city are the greatest asset this city has. This has never been more true than now. And finally, on a lighter note, I'm starting to get holiday cards and notes here at City Hall. And I got, I got this one here on Friday. No, not actually Friday. I got it today. Got this today. Dated Friday. And it says on the back, Dear Mayor, may the force be with you and yours. Thank you for all you do. P S, please put up the leg lamp. They say. And I, I, I will watch from that. In fact, we, we do have the leg lamp. I just haven't opened the blind yet, but anytime now. So, thank you. This concludes my report. Turning now to the regular agenda, item A is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-seven, authorizing the city to continue to engage Jeremy Iosu, Esquire of Stefanic Iosu and Associates to conduct labor negotiations and related services. This is on second reading. Uh, Mr. Iosu has been representing the city since the beginning of, uh, twenty eighteen. From time to time, it's appropriate that we would, uh, review, uh, the, the contract under which he engages the city or the cities engaged with him. We do have, um, and have had a number of labor matters this year. Uh, we are, this is a negotiations year for our CBAs. We have one CBA negotiated with the fire union. Uh, we still have, uh, three more agreements to negotiate, uh, two with police, one with the Service Department. Service negotiations are underway. Police had a recent change in representation, but we will be resuming with them shortly. Had numerous other projects, including Employee Handbook and, uh, a couple of grievances that we had to address that took up a fair amount of Mr. Iosu's time. And we find ourselves in a position where even though we have budgeted an adequate amount, uh, we have exhausted the amount that he's been authorized and find ourselves on the other side of that amount. So we need to, uh, take steps to reauthorize our engagement with Mr. Iosu. We did discuss this somewhat, uh, last meeting. Uh, there were some questions that were sensitive and pertained to the negotiations that we addressed in executive session a few minutes before the seven o'clock hour. Uh, and I would ask then that, um, we go ahead and, uh, pass this ordinance so that, uh, Mr. Iosu can continue his work on behalf of the city. Or anything anybody care to add? Or are there any questions? And if not, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty-seven?
So moved.
Very good. Motion approved by Mrs. Barry. Is there a second?
We, we clarified that that's on emergency.
Oh, yes. Let's have that on emergency. Yes, Mrs. Barry, would you agree to move on emergency?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Thank you. Second by Mrs. Purdy. Any further discussion? If there is no discussion, we will take, uh, two votes. First is on, no, wait, we don't need to, yes, yeah, we only need one vote. We only need one vote, but because we want the ordinance to take effect right away, we will need a vote of five or more for that group. Um, Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
This is Blankfield.
Aye.
Mrs. Barry.
Aye.
Mrs. Purdy.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdel.
Aye.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Uh, ordinance is approved and will take effect soon as I present to me for signature. And I sign. Next is item B, motion to approve Planning Commission's ruling on the demolition of house located forty-four ninety-nine Groveland. It's parcel number seven twenty-one dash fourteen dash zero zero seven dash zero eight. I suggest we discuss item B in tandem with item C, and I would give the floor to Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Planning Commission met last meet, last week on an application, um, by, um, Domus Construction. With respect to, um, a parcel located on Groveland that, um, it's actually two parcels, but it, it's as though it's a double lot and the, the current parcels are divided horizontally, um, which with one parcel being much bigger than the other. The home on the lot faces, uh, Green Road, um, and it's an old farmhouse construction, uh, home. The proposal is for a lot split, um, or I'm sorry, a lot consolidation, followed by a lot split that would divide the, um, combined property vertically, so that the result would be two buildable lots. Um, the request is for a demolition of the existing home and the construction of two new homes. The developer has, um, indicated that it believes the homes will be marketed in the five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. The approval of the Planning Commission, um, was given contingent upon the developer entering into a development agreement with the city. With that, I would turn it over to Mr. Rock, perhaps for additional comment, um, and or to the developer, who I see as who.
Thank you, uh, Mr. McConville. Um, I, I just mentioned, I was on the Planning Commission. We had a meeting back in October in which we tabled it and then we reconvene, I'm sorry, it was in November, which we tabled it, we reconvened last Thursday to review, uh, this project. And, oh, actually, Mr. Schulman is here. Maybe he should. Mr. Schulman, do you want to introduce the project and explain what you're doing? And then I could, uh, follow up with the, uh, Planning Commission's recommendations?
That's a fine idea. Mr. Schulman, would you care to take the floor?
Yes, if I may. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is William Schulman. I'm a chief production officer for Domus Construction. And I would like to thank everyone for taking your time looking into our project tonight. So it is older house, um, two lots right now, but the, the way lots are split, that makes it pretty much unusable. So we propose to divide it to two equal lots, which will be very equal or similar to the size of the lots of the other houses on the street. And we proposing to build two new homes, uh, in the size of twenty-seven to twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, we provided our, uh, blueprint, as well as color rendering, I believe, and our engineering on the lots and exact location of the house with the setbacks. We do not believe we will be requesting any variances. And, uh, we think personally, I think it's a very good looking, two very good looking homes. And it would be, I think, good addition to the street and to the city.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Schulman. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Schulman?
I, I could follow up with a little more explanation. So, um, I don't believe it's in the packet, but the site, there's, uh, the site has two parcels, one to the north and one to the south along Groveland. And the reason behind that formation is that the house used to face South Green Road, um, when it was built in eighteen ninety. And, uh, as the neighborhood developed, they put houses along Green Road, cause it, that house sat further back. So, um, it's a little out of place. There's a couple other houses similar to that in Shaker where they look like they're sideways and, um, it's a little out of place, but that's just the way, uh, the neighborhood was developed back then. So what they need to do, um, once they demolish this house, as Mr. Schulman explained, it's not usable with the two parcels, north and south, because you can't access the north one without going through the south parcel, is to, I guess, flip that ninety degrees so that the two parcels are facing Groveland Road. So that's why we need to consolidate and then re-split the lot. The Planning Commission did vote to approve the demolition and the lot split. The only apprehension was that it is an old home and, um, it, it's definitely challenging to see an old home go, especially one built in that era. There's very few houses around built that long ago. But the fact that two new homes, two, not one, but two new homes would be built, um, as Mr. Schulman explained, over five hundred thousand. I think it's very ambitious. I hope you get that, because that would be great for the neighborhood. Um, I'm not so sure, but, um, but two very expensive homes, because to build a new home, it's very expensive. So there will be two new homes of very high value, which I think would have a very positive impact on the neighborhood. So the Planning Commission did vote to approve, uh, this project.
And I, I guess it's also worth noting that as part of the Planning Commission's review, there was a site plan that was presented. Um, the site plan, um, depicts that each home will be constructed without the need for any variances.
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Mr. Gould, you have the floor?
Councilman Rock, were, were there any, you know, significant concerns shared by neighbors in the area?
Um, from the two meetings, there was one neighbor that had, it was a Zoom meeting. Um, I think the only concern was the number of people that could be in a house, but I mean, there's nothing that really you can do about that. The, the house that's sitting there now is, is a large farmhouse that could hold many people. So I, that's not something that we could really prohibit against. Unless it's a rental, we have prohibition of how many unrelated people could be in a rental property. That was really the one neighbor's only concern that I had heard. It is a five-bedroom house for both of them. Both homes would be five bedrooms. So it does lend itself to having, you know, multiple people on both lots, but that could be any home in University Heights.
Thank you.
Worth adding that the same neighbor, by the end of the meeting, also expressed her approval generally of the direction the project appeared to be going, that she thought it would look and be an improvement on the street regardless.
And this home will go to the Architecture Review Board at a future meeting, uh, both homes. So, uh, they look beautiful. And once they go to ARB, they may have some other finesse they may want to do, but I think it would make a nice fit for the neighborhood.
Is there any further question or comment? Well, then I'll just state briefly before I ask for a motion to approve that it's worth mentioning for the record that, um, this project is happening in part because of the community reinvestment area that we together committed to doing as a city government back in twenty eighteen, something that myself and Vice Mayor Weiss and Mr. McConville and Mr. Grogan Myers worked on together to get state approval to promote this kind of redevelopment. And, um, as we build and see more homes, more construction here in the city, a long time had gone by without new homes being built, and these are going to be two, you know, valuable and worthy additions to the city of beautiful homes. So excited about the project and we should all be excited that, you know, that we've worked together to create a climate here in University Heights to promote this kind of development. If there's nothing further, is there a motion to approve the Planning Commission's ruling on the demolition of the house located four-four-nine-nine Groveland?
Mayor, if there, if there is such a motion, I would just ask that, um, it follow the Planning Commission's recommendation that it be contingent on the parties entering into a development agreement.
Okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the Planning Commission's ruling on the demolition of the house located four-four-nine-nine Groveland, parcel number seventy-one dash one four dash oh oh seven forward slash oh eight, uh, to approve the demolition contingent upon entry of a suitable development agreement between the developer and the city?
So moved, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gould. Any discussion on this motion? Saying none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfield.
Aye.
This is Barry.
Aye.
This is Purdy.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Erdel. Mr. Erdel, did I see him?
I think that's an I.
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Gould.
Aye.
Very, very good. Motion carries, which takes us to item C, motion to approve Planning Commission's ruling on the consolidation and lot split of parcels seven-two-one dash one four dash oh oh seven forward slash oh eight into two separate parcels, uh, at four-four-nine-nine Groveland Road. Mr. McConville, you have the floor.
I, again, this is, this is really, um, same project that we just considered. Um, the, um, Planning Commission considered both, um, the demolition and, um, the consolidation and then the lot split of the parcels in the manner that Mr. Rock The consolidation and then the lot split of the parcels in the manner that Mr. Rock described earlier. Allowing for two buildable lots. With the site plan showing the construction of two homes without the need of variances. Similar to. The motion just approved by council. This recommendation comes from the planning commission contingent upon the parties entering into a development agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions for Mr. McConville? Rock, anything you'd care to add? Mr. Sherman, anything you'd care to add at this junction? Now, okay, very good. Is there a motion to approve the planning commission's ruling on the consolidation? And lot split of parcel seventy one dash fourteen dash oh, oh, seven forward slash oh, eight into two. Separate parcels of four, four, nine, nine Groveland Road, that ruling being an approval contingent upon. The city and the developer entering into a suitable development agreement. Very good. Motion by Mrs. Weiss. Is there?
A second mayor.
By Mrs. Blankfeld. Very good. Is there any discussion? There is none. Mrs. Thomas, will you please call the roll?
This is Blankfeld. Hi. Mrs. Barry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Sherman, we look forward to seeing you at ARB.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight, enacting codified ordinance section fourteen twenty four dot eleven. Entitled uncertified assessment search fee. This is on second reading. Mr. Kennedy, welcome back. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, this went through the. Building committee. It's gives us the ability to charge a small fee for title searches for undocumented. Those statements.
I'm making some trouble here with Mr. Kennedy's feed, at least on my side. Is anybody able to hear him?
No.
Okay.
Seems to. Seems it appears frozen.
Yes, yes. Mrs. Blankfeld, you're the sponsor of the legislation. Would you care to pick it up from here?
Let's see.
I'd be happy to chime in, Barbara, if you.
Yeah, go ahead, Luke.
Anecdotally, the the.
Better in process. We get a thing on seasonality.
Dennis knows that we can't hear him. All right.
Mr. McConville, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I'll take a crack at this. The. The fiscal department, the the finance department, excuse me, is is receiving. Weekly requests from title companies for. Searches related to assessments that have not yet been certified to. The record, which means that appear of record in connection with any title search. It's the buyer and seller's way of of finding out whether there's any additional lien or potential lien. On the property. It it's labor intensive work that needs to be addressed immediately. And since the title companies are typically charging a fee to their customers, it makes sense for the city. To charge a fee that allows the city to essentially. Recoup its costs of labor in connection with meeting these requests, which. I think as Mr. Kennedy has previously indicated are are numerous. I think the amount of revenue that will be raised over the course of a year will be anywhere from. Thirty five hundred to ten thousand dollars depending on the year. So, you know, it's it's a nice little recoupment for our budget. And I think that's about it.
Very good. Mr. Kennedy, you broke up through most of your. Speech there, which is why we had Mr. McConville take over. It looks like we can see you better now. Is there any? Would you care to take a crack at this? And maybe we can check out your connection?
I think Luke summarized it pretty well. We get about five to fifteen of these requests a week. Probably by the end of the year, we'll be able to generate about. Five to ten thousand dollars of revenue.
Wow, okay. Well, unfortunately, Dennis, connection just isn't working for us right now.
And we plan on bridge special pickup and I'll make it easy to read these. We'll just pass this now. Hope you could hear this.
Okay, very good. Dennis, I'm going to suggest that you phone in because it may help with the audio. I think we've got the gist of it between what we did hear from you and also what Mr. McConville said.
Okay.
And we'll. Is there anything anybody care to add? And if not, is there a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash fifty eight, enacting codified ordinance section fourteen twenty four point eleven entitled uncertified assessment search fee?
Also move mayor.
Emergency.
On emergency.
Very good. So thank you. So we have motion on emergency by Mrs. Blankfeld. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Is there any discussion? Well, seeing none, this is a second reading, so we only need one vote. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld. Hi. This is Barry.
Hi.
This is Pergie.
Hi.
This is Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Motion passes. Next is ordinance, I mean, twenty twenty dash sixty, amending codified ordinance section twelve eighty point ten. Entitled rental of one and two family dwelling units in U one and U two districts. This is on second reading. Mrs. Blankfeld, would you care to take the floor on this one?
This is an item, just the rental ordinance that we've worked so long and hard on. But there are a few items related to it that we still wish to explore. So rather than put this to a vote this evening, I'm moving to take it back to committee for some final discussion and polish.
Take that as a motion to table so that the.
Correct.
Twenty twenty dash fifty eight may be taken up further in committee. At motions by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Erdel. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, will you call the roll?
This is Blankfeld. Hi. This is Barry.
Hi.
This is Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Okay, very good. This item is tabled to return to committee. Next then is item F, ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty two. Enacting codified ordinance section two seventy six point eleven entitled public meeting and notice for the purpose of providing civil service commission members with. The right to establish a regularly scheduled monthly civil service commission meeting. At a date and time convenient for civil service commission members. This is on reading. Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is in response to a request from the police chief and the fire chief that was articulated at the last civil service commission. In the past, we've had some issues with getting a consensus for meeting dates that have created some delay. And in addition, I think there's a desire to create a regularly scheduled monthly meeting date as a means of imposing some deadlines on. On the city administratively so that the city is a little more. Focused and and nimble with respect to. Getting lists certified so that the police and fire departments have. Certified lists of qualified applicants that they can draw from when they need to. This ordinance is patterned after our planning commission ordinance, which is very similar, which allows. Members of the commission. To establish a meeting date that's convenient for them on an annual basis. And I know from emails that have been circulated by the clerk of counsel that. The civil service commission members have been polled on on establishing their meeting date and will probably have that ready to go in time. For the beginning of the year so that, starting in January of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, should this ordinance be passed. The civil service commission will be able to schedule regular meetings.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions?
Add that that I I believe that having a an ordinance like this has promoted better scheduling and more regular. Work by our planning commission. While the planning commission does not meet every month, the planning commission members reserve a designated time every month, being the first Thursday. Evening of the month. By by which a date certain out, Mrs. Thomas is able to advise whether or not we have anything before them that will be considered for that meeting. And it has promoted ease of scheduling. We know that there is a regular meeting. Promotes promotes ease of administration. We know that we're working towards a regular meeting. And it's it's helped put planning commission on track, and I believe that that this kind of regular meeting will help put civil service commission on track. Especially when we have a number of tasks that police and fire need to have done. So I think this is good reform and a step in the right direction to. Better serve our community and better serve how we handle civil service matters here in the city.
Yeah, it's it's an essential move, I think. To have a current and appropriate list from which to hire should the need arise for safety services. It's pretty paramount. So as as Luke, I think the phrase he used was focused and nimble with regard to that updated list. Pretty important stuff. So this is this is good.
Yes. All right, very good. This is a first reading, so if if there is. Nothing further, then we will consider the reading to be had. And we will then plan to take it up at our next regularly scheduled. Meeting, that being on December twenty first of twenty twenty. Okay. Very good. Next then is item G, ordinance twenty twenty dash sixty three, authorizing temporary appropriations for current. Another expenditures of the city of University Heights, Ohio for the period commencing January one, twenty twenty one. And ending March thirty first, twenty twenty one. This is on first reading. Mr. Kennedy, you have the floor, sir. Munute himself.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there seems to be an echo.
Nothing's working tonight.
Okay.
That was.
Now you're muted.
Better?
Yes.
Okay, these are. This is a request for temporary appropriations for the first quarter. Of. Next year. Next year. These are based on estimates of what. Of what we think we'll need for those first three months, and then we'll continue to work on preparing a permanent budget. That hopefully we can get to council at some point in January for approval in February.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Well, if there are none, this is again on first reading, and we will take this up then at our next regularly scheduled meeting two weeks from today. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for getting this prepared for us.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is I motion to approve GPD group fee schedule for twenty twenty one. Mr. Chuni, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have our contract is annually renewed by city council, and this is our annual request. For historical purposes, we've been the engineer since nineteen seventy eight. We like to keep the string going. We are not raising any rates this year. We are holding all of our rates at the twenty twenty rate, so. And I would request approval. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni, and thank you, Mr. Churney. Are there any questions for Mr. Chuni? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the GPD group fee schedule for twenty twenty one?
So moved.
Very good. Motion by Mr. Erdel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chuni, for keeping those fees the same.
Thank you. If there is no further discussion, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Barry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Mr. Gould?
Hi.
Motion carried. Very good. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you again next year. Okay, next is item I, motion to approve invoice from Heights Hillcrest Communications Center for first quarterly. Twenty twenty one billing in an amount not to exceed one hundred three thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars seventy six cents. I'll take this one. The safety director, as council's aware and as the city's aware, beginning at the end of twenty seventeen. We consolidated our cities dispatch center into a regional dispatch center. In partnership with Shaker Heights, Cleveland Heights. South. And in Richmond Heights. So these five cities make up the the Heights Hillcrest. Cities for the purpose of the Heights Hillcrest Communications Center. For the last year or so, I've I've been the chair of the of the board that oversees the the communication center. Nick Taseko is our executive director. Mr. Taseko is also the executive director of the Chagrin Valley. Communication Center and their regional dispatch. This particular invoice represents our contribution towards operating the communication center. It is something that has proved to be a a cost savings for the city. And there have been efficiencies that have been created by having. A regional dispatch center taking a regional approach on this. And as a matter of full disclosure, it's worth mentioning to this city and to council members who have not heard otherwise. I know this was brought up recently in Shaker Heights. We are exploring the possibility of of merging. Organizationally, our Heights Hillcrest Communications Center with the Chagrin Valley Communications Center. As well, as far as a matter of operations, it would not change the 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 way that we work day to day would not change the way. That calls are handled when they come in, what would mean that the the dispatch center up on Severance Circle would would remain. And would continue to operate as is, whereas what would change is certain efficiencies potentially with regard to health insurance and and other benefits. It would put the group together into a more competitive pool for providing those benefits to. The employees of the respective dispatch centers. So. the employees of the respective dispatch centers. So could realize perhaps a $35,000 savings annually to the city if we're able to do this merger. There are some other benefits that could be realized from it, but the certainly the concrete one would be that particular cost savings. So that's something that we are exploring and working on and looking for a way to 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 do something that will it's not too often that you find something where you're able to save that kind of money and and not lose some degree of service. But this appears to be one of those places where we can. So that is something that we're looking to do in the new year and and hope to have. If it's if we find that it's feasible, we hope to have that done in the next year approximately. So that said, that said, I nevertheless wanted to bring that up in context with this particular item. The communication center, the regional dispatch communication center after some initial growing pains, I think, has has worked out well for our city. Our residents have served. I believe our police department, fire department have worked well with it and within it and and our city, just like all the cities, have a voice in making sure that's operated to our standards. Our response times have not been affected after the some initial training and adjustment, we are back up to the kinds of standards that are to be expected that our community expects with regard to dispatch, and that should continue. So if there's anything Chief Rogers or Chief Perko would care to add, I'd be delighted to recognize either of them. I think I've covered most of it. Anything chiefs would like to bring up at this juncture?
Mayor, I think you covered it from my end. Anything that I would have acknowledged?
Okay, very good. Chief Perko, anything?
I agree, Mayor. Well stated. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the other things I really like about having this regional dispatch center is that though the chiefs have always worked with their counterparts in other cities, it's one more opportunity for us to work regionally on a number of matters. And this is one more venue, one more opportunity to 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 do that. The regional meetings that we have bi-monthly for this particular overseeing this particular entity. Are there any questions with respect to the invoice or what we're doing with regional dispatch? And if there were not, is there a motion to approve the invoice from the Heights Hillcrest Communications Center for first quarterly 2021 billing in the amount not to exceed $103,716.76?
Also moved there.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Blankfeld. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
A second.
Very good. Second by Mr. Rock. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
This is Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item K, motion to approve purchase for life pack 1,000 AEDs with EC machine units and four infant child defibrillation electrode replacements from Stryker in an amount not to exceed $10,838.80. Chief Perko, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Purchasing of AEDs is something that the fire department has been looking at for a couple of years. We have been seeking out grant opportunities to apply for these, not only for the fire department, but for other city buildings within the city such as city hall and public places. Unfortunately, we have not been able to secure funding for AEDs. Additionally, we do keep AED on our fire engine and our ladder truck. One of the cardiac monitors, the AED monitor, has failed and had to be decommissioned due to its age. It's no longer serviceable. They don't make parts for it anymore or make repairs to it. So that one was in need of replacement this year. The second one, we have gone without for a number of years, and the pool staff has been loaning theirs to us during the winter months. This poses an issue for us in the summer when we don't have one to replace it. And additionally, we have not had one for our command car that has been in service since 2019. The fourth one would be a new addition to our fleet. That would be something that we want to mount inside the fire station for public use. Should we not be in quarters or that there's no apparatus in quarters? And someone drives up to the fire station with a cardiac event. We or any other staff that may be in the area of the building could secure that and render care. So these also have a special capability that other standard AEDs don't have. They work in conjunction with our cardiac monitors that are in our ambulances. So all the cabling is interchangeable, and once we apply the electrode patches to the patient, they can be simply DC'd from the AED unit and plugged into a cardiac unit of an arriving ambulance once it gets there.
All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Perko. Mrs. Weiss, looks like you have a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Question, how many people a year come up to drive up to the fire station and have a have a cardiac emergency?
I would have to run some official numbers for you, but it's it's not very many that are having a cardiac emergency. Something like an AED for someone that's in a cardiac failure, they would be having someone else drive them. They would be in no position to drive. So this would be maybe they're trying to drive somebody to the hospital or they're driving and suddenly their passenger goes into cardiac arrest and then you see the fire station in Poland. So I would say it's not very frequent.
Do other do other fire stations have this?
Yes. Most public buildings have an AED in them. And all fire apparatus in the city of University Heights are staffed with paramedics. We have full medical care on there. So there are paramedics driving the fire truck and the fire ladder truck. And there should be no reason that we don't offer paramedic care, which is cardiac care. But to do that, we need the medications and the cardiac unit.
I meant mounted in the building. So you're saying we don't have a defibrillator at all in our building and police, fire, city hall, nothing?
I'm speaking for fire, no, and city hall, no. I could not tell you about the rest of the buildings for sure.
Police department does not have one either.
How much does one cost? $2,000?
Yeah, I believe they're about $3,000. We contract with this company for servicing of our current cardiac monitors as well as our COTS and some other equipment. So they do give us a group rate.
No, we definitely should have one in in a building that any department can run and get if they need.
Mr. Perkorni, I thought you were raising your hand.
I was agreeing with the chief. We should have one in the building. We do not have one in service either. So whenever we need emergency care, we we go to the fire department.
I think that's prudent that we should have one accessible if any department needs it.
This opens up a larger discussion. A fire department used to provide CPR training to other city employees, I think primarily police employees many years ago. And we had not done that for some time. We started in 2018 and through 2019 providing CPR training to residents in partnership with our medical control in the city library. I know there had been discussions this year to start doing some classes with the police department, which we're still trying to figure out the logistics of that with the pandemic. But I I, once we get through the pandemic and have enough qualified instructors within the fire department, that is something that I would like to propose to have open to all city employees to see if there's an interest in becoming CPR trained, and that would be something that fire department would be willing to assist in and providing the instruction of, and then having these AEDs spaced out throughout the city buildings.
Chief, I think that's an excellent idea. Other places I've worked, certainly the last place, I was the one that organized that with the local fire department. Having an AED in the building is great, and while it does talk you through it, knowing in advance and having that training in addition to CPR is a great idea because in the heat of the moment and when everybody's, you know, flummoxed, somebody's gone down. If you've had some prior instruction on the use of those, it's a really good idea. Those those seconds count. I think not just, you know, police department, obviously police department, but other city employees should know how to use that as well.
Yes, AEDs in public buildings have been pretty common practice for at least 10 years now, and unfortunately, with all active threats over the last couple of years, many of those are the AEDs are typically in a cabinet on a wall, and now many of those are also holding stop to bleed kits as well. So that would be something that we'll be looking at in the future.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the four life pack 1,000 AEDs with ECG machine units and four infant child defibrillator electrode replacements from Stryker in amount not to exceed $10,838.80?
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. Next is item K, motion to approve the purchase of two Massimo Rainbow DCI adult reusable SPO2, SPCO, SPVET sensor with two LP15 lithium ion batteries and accessories from Stryker in amount not to exceed $4,436.82. Chief Perko, you have the floor once more.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, these this equipment and accessories are items that we typically replace throughout the year. Primarily, it's on the agenda tonight because it is from the same vendor as the AEDs. The pricing combined together does exceed the $15,000 threshold. But the rainbow sensors, those are for reading oxygen levels as well as CO levels in a person's blood. Batteries are for our cardiac monitors in the ambulances. Those are something that we cycle through on a semi-annual basis. And then the other miscellaneous accessories that aren't spelled out in there are primarily for our CPR machine. They're disposable items that we use during the event of CPR and then restock them with a new device. So like I said, these are typically some routine items that we use and just looking to replace them.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Any questions for Chief Perko on this item? All right. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of two Massimo Rainbow DCI adult reusable SPO2, SPCO, SPVET sensor with two LP15 lithium ion batteries and accessories from Stryker in amount not to exceed $4,436.82?
Awesome move, Mayor.
Very good. Motion by Mrs. Blankfeld, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Berry. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Before we proceed to item L, I would ask motion to amend the agenda to add the following agenda item. A motion to accept CCFCA Regional FY2019 FEMA AFG Grant in the amount of $4,609.82 with an applicant match of $460.98. This is an item that we forwarded to all council members earlier today was meant to be included on the agenda. Is there a motion to add this item to the agenda this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Erdl. There's a motion by Mr. Earl to add this item to the agenda. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Weiss. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. The agenda is amended. The next item on the agenda is the motion to accept CCFCA Regional Fiscal Year 2019 FEMA AFG Grant Contribution in the amount of $4,609.82 with an applicant match of $460.98. Mr. Chief Perko, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This grant was submitted by the Cuyahoga County Fire Chiefs on on behalf of the members that are associated with it. We knew this year early on that PPE was going to be hard to get a hold of, that funding might be an issue. And this was applied early on during the pandemic. And fortunately, we were awarded it. As indicated in the memo, the city of Shaker Heights is the host of the grant, so they are the fiscal agent. Chief Sweeney of the Fire Department in Shaker, he's a president of the Cuyahoga County Fire Chief Association. So they are the ones that are managing the entire grant and passed the adoption and acceptance of the grant in its entirety. Thirty-three communities participated in this by way of MOU. The total grant project was for $195,000, 295, 236 and 45 cents. There was a 10% match due to the amount of communities that were participating. That match was for $17,748.77. As the mayor indicated, University Heights was awarded $4,609.82, so our share will be And this will add to our stockpile that we have for PPE, which remains to be in good quantity at this time for our members.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Are there any questions for Chief Perko? Is there a motion to accept the CCFCA Regional Fiscal Year 2019 FEMA AFG Grant Contribution in the amount of $4,609.82 cents with a match of $460.98?
So moved.
Very good motion by Mr. Erdl, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blankfeld, any discussion? As we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock. Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us then to item L, motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal and or real estate matters. We do have an administrative personnel matter that Vice Mayor Weiss and I would like to discuss. Would ask that we move to have an executive session following the regular meeting for that purpose. Is there a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Weiss, second by Mrs. Blankfeld. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfeld.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Pardie.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss. Mr. Erdl.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Go.
Hi.
Very good. We will hold that executive session at the conclusion of the regular portion of the meeting. Now turn to directors' reports. We'll start with finance. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports, financial reports done for the month of November by the end of this week, so I will get those out to everybody. The next council meeting will have some small appropriation adjustments to balance the budget for the end of the year. We'll also have a proposed medical insurance renewal rate that we just We'll also have a proposed medical insurance renewal rate that we just received late last week. That will be for council to consider be a motion to approve. I was informed we're getting a little more than $1,000 more in final COVID money. So that'll be part of those appropriations that get approved at the next meeting. And then we will expense that using the payroll expense for safety forces. We had hoped to get our audit completed in November, but the state auditors actually ran into some COVID issues themselves. So they have asked that we're hold off until January to get that audit released. That's for 2019. I'm not aware of any significant or material issues or citations. So that's good. We, I was also participant in a conference call. The state is going to bid out the audit for the next four years. That would be audit years 2020 through 24. Responses are due from CPA firms on December 17th. It is an update for tax collections. Collections in November were $445,120. That was about six and a half percent more than 2019 collections for the month, which were $417,912. And the year-to-date collections through November are down 2.1% from last year. This year, we're just under $9.8 million. Last year through November, we were at 9.98. So it's a 2.1% drop from the year before and again, as we constantly reference during the course of this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Kennedy? All right. Seeing none, we will proceed to Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of items briefly, counsel. We will be conducting a conference call tomorrow with representatives from the Heights Jewish Center. We are hoping to be able to finalize our lease agreement with them for the parking lot at Purvis Park. The fair housing cases, three of the four cases have been essentially fully briefed. I'll be making decisions on whether those cases will proceed to conciliation within the next and providing a schedule to the various parties as dictated by the decisions. And then finally, with the rental registration I should have materials out to you in connection with the issues that were raised by the Akron Cleveland Association of Realtors along with suggested language for your penalty provision. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McConville. Are there any questions for Mr. McConville? All right. Thank you. Next is public safety, police.
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Fire Chief Perko.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel for your support tonight. Three items to report. One, just looking into some planning for 2021, primarily on how we're going to step up our engagement efforts with the community. This was something that we had started to discuss back in 2019 with the Safety Committee with Home Safety Inspection Program. We were not able to kick that off this year as we anticipated due to the pandemic. So we're trying to figure out how to best look into that for next year. In addition to the CPR classes, I mentioned at the library in trying to work with our medical control to do something virtually. Second item, I've been working on a COVID guidance document. Something comprehensive that kind of outlines the various items that I personally have been dealing with within the fire department, fielding calls with the County Board of Health and the medical director on how to best isolate individuals, quarantine, knowing what close contact is. There's so many different variables and the pandemic's been so very fluid. I figured that all of the information gained through the year would be good to kind of put into a little cheat sheet, if you will, for other employees or directors if needed. So that should be completed up in the next week or so. And then last, I had mentioned maybe, I believe in October or November's meeting about trying to do a monthly public safety announcement. We're working on December's and that will be home heating safety. And that will be released out on our social media here in the next week or so. That concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Chief Perko. Are there any questions for Chief Perko? All right. Thank you, Chief. Next is service. Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. I only have two items I'd like to inform counsel about our tree planting program, our tree planting program for 2020 is ongoing. We hope to have the approximately 120 trees in the ground by the end of next week. So we've been working on that even through the weather. Second item is curbside leaf collection. Obviously, it's been slowed down by the weather. So the last week or so, we have not been able to collect any leaves due to the snow. But we expect to resume that program on the 14th, next Monday. Hopefully, if the weather cooperates and the snow dwindles enough on the piles, we will dig up the piles and continue sucking them up. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pecorni, Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, Mr. Pecorni, I know that it seems sometimes your crews have a thankless job in the city. It wasn't Saturday didn't pass where I saw people complaining about how early we were picking up, you know, leaves. Then Tuesday came along and people were complaining that we hadn't picked up the leaves yet. And not only did we have complaints when we plowed the sidewalks and got ice in front of some people's driveways, but we got complaints when we didn't plow the other sidewalks. And so I just wanted to say for everything that you and your team did over this last storm episode, thank you so much for keeping our roads safe and for for the service that you guys put in. And if you pass that on, I'm sure they don't have a time to be watching our meetings after a long day's work, but if you pass that along to them, I'd be greatly appreciated.
No, thank you. I appreciate your comments and I will pass them along.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gold. Yes, Mrs. Berry.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Pecorni. I appreciate my colleagues' sentiments and I agree and would want to thank our service department always for the work that they do, but I, I hear what he's saying about leaves. I'm getting all the calls about leaves again. My question goes more to the heart of, is there a plan? We always ask, is there a plan? We hear that the leaf blower had, or the leaf pickup has gone through the city three times. But I hear from people who say they watch it go by on the street across the intersection from them and they wait three or four weeks. So is there a plan? When you start picking up again, are you starting from where you stopped so you can pick up for those who have leaves sitting out? Or are you, I mean, I just don't understand what the process is. Are you eyeballing what seems to be a street with a lot of leaves?
Right. I understand. And there is a plan. And we do follow a course throughout the city. We keep track of where we've been by marking a map as we go down the street. And then we resume the next day at the same point we let off from the day before until we get through the entire city. And then we start again, usually pretty close to maybe not exactly where we started last time. But in general, we have a crew starting on the east side of town along Green Road and we have a crew starting on the west side, usually along the Saybrook Meadow Brook area. And those two crews both work westward towards the first crew towards Warrensville and the second crew towards South Taylor. So we do tend to follow that same pattern over and over again. We left off most recently along Hillbrook and Chining on the west side of town. So that's where we'll be resuming. And we left off somewhere around Meadow Brook and Glendon, I believe, on the east side of town. So that's where we'll resume over there.
Okay. Thank you for once again explaining the plan and the process. I do think people sometimes don't completely, well, patience isn't always a virtue for everyone. The other question I have goes to the heart of the recycling and I think we hear this a lot too. I've been getting the complaint again about guys just throwing carefully packaged recyclables into the rubbish bin on the jitneys. And in fact, I saw that myself in my driveway with our carefully tied up newspapers that we'd saved for a while. Instead of going in the front pouch, they just went in the back in the trash bin. So counsel made it very clear that we all have a value around recycling. The majority of us did vote to keep recycling active. And we always hear about how UH is so low in recycling stats, but we watch our guys throw recycling into the rubbish. So do you ever go out and like drive around and spot check what's in there just to see? Because somehow there should be a way to get a grip on this. If we don't have time to drive it up and recycle it ourselves personally, which I didn't have with my newspapers, then we should be able to count on having these things recycled if they're left out. And thank you for these answers.
Yes, and thank you for your comments. I agree. And yes, we do monitor. Both myself and my assistant, John, are out watching the crews almost on a daily basis, if not both morning and afternoon on a daily basis. We do repeatedly tell the guys that anything that is packaged properly should go into the recycling. I do monitor the fact that there are recycling piles on all the streets as we pass by. It is hard to monitor them on a house-by-house basis. But we do our best with that and I will pass your comments along to the guys and try to again reiterate to them how important it is that when people do take the time to recycle that we get it done that way.
Is there a solution? I mean, I understand that sometimes the front baskets may be full. So what can we change? Make it work?
The best solution, if you look at the piles and follow the guys, is having it in the blue bag with the blue bag securely tied. So when we start looking at bundles of newspaper, either in a paper grocery bag or tied with string, it's not something I really want to deal with from the perspective that they're going to throw it on the side of the road down the street. And if it comes loose, then they're the guys that have to pick it all back up again. So when you look at those piles, you're going to find that they, they are somewhat selective. The piles are mostly well-tied blue bags.
And anything can go in the blue bag, newspapers, cardstock, anything?
Correct. Anything recyclable. Yes.
Right. Okay. I will pass that on too. Thank you.
Quite welcome.
All right. Is there anything further for Mr. Pecorni? Thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you.
Let's see. That then takes us to our city engineer, Joe Chuni. Mr. Chuni, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do not have a report tonight. I do want to thank counsel though for your continued confidence in GPD and look forward to working with you again next year.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chuni. Next then is communicate, I'm sorry, are there any questions for Mr. Chuni? Okay. Next then is communications. Mike Cook, Mr. Cook, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Keep it to one item. The mailer that we discussed at the last meeting that I worked on with the police department tried to inform the residents about the car theft situation, that should be hitting mailboxes on Friday. I'll let you know that'll be delayed. It's taking a little bit longer than we'd hoped, but hopefully everyone will begin that on Friday and hopefully that will raise awareness and put a damper on this, this theft situation.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Any questions for Mr. Cook?
Um, this is my night, I guess. Not to be too obstreperous, but you guys do know that not everybody is on Twitter, Facebook and Nextdoor. Not even Nextdoor. I don't know, oh, Instagram. Because you announced all the awards in such a lovely fashion, rolling them out. But I believe there are people that had no idea. And I know it's hard in this fragmented time of communications to get things out to everyone. But I don't, I don't know, an email blast, maybe the city hall page, you know, a listing or something. A press release. I don't know, but not everybody, I might just say, is on those three social media forums.
Right.
And regular.
It did also go out in an email on Thanksgiving dates, the same list that gets our our COVID updates once or twice a week. And that went out Thanksgiving night. So that's, that hit about 1,500 people and the we also did a press release. It was on the front page of the Heights Observer, cleveland.com ran it and the Cleveland Jewish News, I believe, ran it, Alta. Saying that out loud, I'm not 100% sure that they ran. I think they did, but let me double check on that. Yeah, you're right that there isn't a way to get everyone. We could also do that in a, we're to resume the At Your Service newsletter in January and we could do an article on that. So that's just another way to get the word out. But yeah, you're right that, you know, we can't be overly dependent on on social media. Because you're right, not everyone gets it. But I think I think we cover 90% of the city with, if we hit everything, be it the social media, the press release, and we have a good relationship with the Cleveland Jewish News, cleveland.com, Heights Observer, which gets just about everything out, you know, filling in some of the gaps with Mosaic and the newsletter. You're right where, like I said, you can't get everyone, but almost like how Amy Acton used to say with, you know, the different layers of Swiss cheese. You do it in enough ways, you hit just, just about everyone. But yeah, you're absolutely right. We're not every single person is going to see in every different format.
Well, and it sounds like you did hit a lot of those formats, although I, I don't know how many people pick up the Heights Observer and UH. I'd love to know because we used to think not that many, actually. It was more CH. But do the newspapers pick up press releases anymore, Mike? Because cleveland.com, you know, that's just another online forum. Is there any print? PD doesn't print any of these things?
For the most part, the cleveland.com, when Jeff at the Sun News, you know, they're, they're owned by the same company. Usually we see those in the print edition. Unfortunately, the Sun News is about, you know, eight pages nowadays. It's thinner, but I mean, they do, they do cover us and, you know, a lot of the stuff that you see printed on or posted on cleveland.com usually appears in the, the print edition. As for your question about Heights Observer in University Heights. Yeah, I agree with your premise. I think it's more popular in Cleveland Heights, but I know a couple more businesses in University Heights are now distributing. And I know Bialy's Bagels across the streets now. You can pick it up there. But again, I think also part of this is even if with more University Heights businesses starting to carry it, it's tougher with the pandemic where you're, you're not going in, you're not lounging around, you're not leisurely, leisurely reading a newspaper in a public place. So, but yeah, Heights Observer helps, you know, the print edition, but also the on-online edition. They also send out an email blast. So again, not everyone gets every single thing, but by just, you know, blasting it in many different formats as possible, then we get the word out to hopefully the overwhelming majority of residents.
Now, I would again encourage, if you have residents who contact you about not hearing about things, I strongly encourage that they be advised to sign up for the At Your Service newsletter or for the coronavirus updates. It's really encourage that they be advised to sign up for the At Your Service newsletter or for the coronavirus updates. It's really the same list. So if they go to the website and sign up there, or if they can't navigate the website, but just want to be emailed, they can contact City Hall or you can forward their emails to Mike Cook and and he will add them to the list. Um, the thing is, is that uh one way or or another, through one of the various means, uh, people who want to be informed uh will get informed. And and so so, you know, in the civic world, they went out just any way we could except for the way of putting it out uh through a letter that would be littered all over town, which we did an effort to stop doing. Uh, so so that that's um, there's, you you know, I figure with thirteen thousand people, granted, you know, not every man, woman and child wants the email, but but there's, there's truly more people that could be on that email list than aren't, but we
Yes, absolutely. Always encouraging people to sign up for the email. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If any further question, Mr. Cook? All right. All right.
Mayor, I can tell you that uh the TV is on the other room and Pittsburgh Steelers just lost to the Browns or this much closer to home field advantage throughout the playoffs. Thank you.
All right. Oh, the implications. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Cook. All right. Uh, finally, uh, economic development, Mrs. Drucker.
I just want to remind counsel tomorrow, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting to review draft of the um RFP for the uh comprehensive zoning code update. So I am looking forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Any questions for Mr.?
Mayor, I actually have a question on um, since there's not a building report, if you can if if you can give um us an idea of how the restructuring is going and and the timeline.
Yes, uh, uh, we have, um, we have hired new administrative assistants. Uh, they they have begun. They are training with Mr. Beck and with Mrs. Drucker. And we have also been working with uh with Howard Sonstein and Jason on a part-time basis with the permits and 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 inspections that can't be by uh the housing inspectors. We have, we have posted for a chief, but we have um a couple resumes, we're beginning to process for moving official. And there are some that that is a that is a big part of of this at this point. We do have, we had been circulating internally a and in a uh, because it is a draft of a greater it was separate from the chief unofficial. Now, there were a number of members we wanted to run compared to how we've been doing it on the ad hoc. Uh, I have some of those numbers, Mr. Kennedy, who is back, you know, remotely first time to that need to be with us to crunch the numbers. I I have my suspicion about how the numbers are going to go, but they actually, I don't want to pre-conclude what I think we're going to find, but but my sense is that we're going to find that we will have better service about the same simply by going full-time people in the in the measure of the positions that we previously had when we had uh Mr. McReynolds and Mr. Groban Myers here on a full-time basis. They were doing, simply changing it around with but we're on that. Um, set back a little bit just because until today, Mr. Kennedy had been out since the fifth and the reality of the work through the you know, the pandemic and the precautions we've all had to take in regard to illness and staying out of the office when we're not well.
So you're saying that we do have resumes um that are worthy of consideration for a building commissioner or properly certified in plumbing, electrical and built and mechanical?
We have, we have CBO, you can come from CBOs for the CB posted that a month ago. And uh, yes, I'm working with Mr. Zach, who is also working with the commissioner at another city. We uh sent interviews.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we will turn to the reports from standing committees. We'll start with building and housing, Mrs. Blankfield.
I'm not report this evening, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Community Outreach, Mr. Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor. Community Outreach met on November thirtieth to talk about um the exploration of a neighbor mediation program. Our colleague, Councilman Gould and prosecutor Stephanie Skleese shared their thoughts about the development of a program, a little bit of their experiences. We talked about next steps and divided um items to research and places to reach out to. And uh we will have the next meeting in early January with the Director of the Cleveland Mediation Center coming in to talk with us and answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Purdy. Uh, economic development, Mr. Rock.
Yes, there is a, excuse me, a meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. Uh, committee meeting and we are going to discuss the RFP for um the the zoning up update. So we're going to be sitting on an RFP. We're going to take a look at that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Rock. Uh, finance, Mrs. Weiss.
Yes, thank you. I'm hoping to have, now that Mr. Kennedy is back, a finance committee meeting for, to review the budget the first week of January and we'll have a doodle poll that will go out.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Recreation, Mr. Erdel.
No report, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Erdel. Safety, Mrs. Berry.
No report.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Service Utilities, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gould. And finally, committee of the whole, Vice Mayor White.
No report, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. Well, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We do have an executive session to follow on a personnel matter. I do not anticipate that we will be making any motions or conducting any business other than a motion to adjourn following um our return from executive session and returning to regular session. So so anybody from the public who wishes to stick around you on this Zoom call, you're welcome to do that. Uh, I don't think you'll be missing anything if you leave at this time, but you are, of course, free to stay. So that said, um, if if all right, we um, we're back. So uh, I'll take a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Blankfield, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mrs. Thomas, please call the roll.
Mrs. Blankfield.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
I'm like a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Rock. Is there a second?
I'm sorry. Everybody's tired.
Who's the second?
Mrs. Berry.
Mrs. Blankfield.
Mrs. Blankfield.
Hi.
Mrs. Berry.
Hi.
Mrs. Purdy.
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss.
Hi.
Mr. Erdel.
Hi.
Mr. Rock.
Hi.
Mr. Gould.
Hi.
Return. Have a good night, everyone.